Let's move on to item 28, Pharma Take Back.
Madam Chair, there is a presentation by staff.
Okay, who's up first here?
Good afternoon, Chair Solis and distinguished members of the board. My name is Dr. Jeffrey Gunsenhouser. I'm a Department of Public Health employee and your interim health officer for the county. I'm here today with Mr. Koby Sky, who's a principal civil engineer with Department of Public Works, and Mr. Angelo Belomo, who's the Deputy Director for Health Protection in Department of Public Health. We're pleased to be here today to provide you an update on activities to address the very serious problem posed by unexpired and unused pharmaceuticals and Sharps and how these may be disposed in our county. Next slide, please. As background, I do just want to comment that eight years ago, this board did pass a motion to support extended producer responsibility, which recognizes the need for manufacturers of products to take responsibility for the impacts of their products, particularly on public health and on the environment. Seventeen months ago, your board, in the context of EPR, as it's called, asked us to explore the possibility of adopting motion similar to the ones that were adopted in an ordinance, excuse me, that were adopted in San Francisco, San Mateo, San Francisco, and Santa Clara County. Our report back was favorable, so you asked us in August of 2015 to develop an ordinance which would require producers of pharmaceuticals and Sharps to develop product stewardship take-back programs. We worked on developing that ordinance, and then in May of this year, you referred back the item to us and also asked us to work with the industry on looking at expedited implementation of some more immediate options for education and outreach, and also take-back medications and Sharps events in Los Angeles County. So let's go to the next slide. Thank you very much. So on June 14th of this year, and reviewing a set of options that the work group provided to the board, you passed a motion which was in support of what we called, part of what we called Option One, which asked the work group to work with a variety of stakeholders, including the industry, to accomplish the things listed on this slide, which are to launch a public education and outreach program, to implement take-back event days, to measure the effectiveness of all these activities, also to look into Walgreens' efforts with its kiosk, and then to provide you a report back today, which is why we are here. Let's go to the next slide. So after your motion in June, the work group immediately put together a letter which had sent to industry, which outlined the board's recommendations, and we held a conference call with them to review the motion in detail, and that was completed before the end of June. We also identified 10 locations within your respective districts that we thought would be good places for the take-back sites, and we provided that list to industry in early July. On the 20th of July, we were provided a draft of the industry's plan. We did a quick review, and on that review, we realized it really did not satisfy the elements that the board had outlined, so we convened a quick meeting on the 21st of July, the day right after we received it, and to go over what we thought the gaps were, and we put together in writing, within a week, a recap of that meeting and our suggestions on how the plan could be improved. If we could go to the next slide. On the 12th of August, we received the final written plan from industry. We reviewed that proposal again, found that there were some gaps in the plan that didn't meet the suggestions that was provided in your motion. We actually went through it in detail. We scored each of the items in the plan, indicating whether it met, partly met, or did not meet the board's expectations, and we also made suggestions on how the plan could be improved to meet what we intended. Next slide. So some of the specifics of what was missing from the industry's plan is outlined on this slide and was highlighted in the letter that we sent to them on August 26th. So one of those things is that it continued to include messaging for in-home disposal, which is something we've deliberately attempted to discourage. We want our residents to use the take-back sites. The plan also relied exclusively on the sheriff to host events, even though we'd asked industry earlier to provide some backups, plans for this in case the sheriff refused to proceed with that. The plan did not focus on the unincorporated areas, which we had specifically asked them to do, and it also really lacks specific details on a number of things. For example, in their education and outreach campaign, they mentioned print advertising, but didn't really say where, for how long, or give samples of it, so we weren't able to adequately evaluate it. Let's go to the next slide. I do just want to highlight again that industry's initial proposal in July included an offer of $200,000 grant to the sheriff to host and run take-back events, and during the July 21st meeting with industry, we recommended they develop an alternate plan in case the sheriff's department determined it couldn't or wouldn't accept that grant. And industry's revised proposal in August, again, offered a grant to the sheriff, but didn't have any alternatives there. And so I think you're aware that on August 29th, the sheriff sent a letter to industry, stating that they elected to decline the grant, but of course, they're willing to oversee any future drug collection events. Next slide. Since our letter on August 26th to industry, none of the involved departments and none of the members of the EPR work group have received any type of response to the corrections that we suggested in their plans. No revised plan has been submitted for review or approval of the work group or the Department of Public Health director as suggested on your motion. I think you're aware that rather on September 16th, industry sent a letter directly to each of your offices, which included some information that's highlighted on this slide. Industry indicated it would launch the My Old Meds LA campaign, which is a web-based information campaign, which has been used in other parts of the country. It stated that the industry can't comply with the motion unless the sheriff's department hosts and operates the top take-back events, and it also stated that the EPR working group was unwilling to work with industry. My response to that comment is to simply say that the one thing that the EPR working group has been unwilling to do is to approve a plan that doesn't meet your intent. So after that letter was received, we met with your health deputies, and on October 12th, as part of our weekly Health and Mental Health Services Cluster Meeting, we invited representatives from the industry and from the working group, discussed the industry's current directions. It was a very informative meeting. We learned a lot about industry's plan. They mentioned that the campaign was about to launch. They said that they'd already revised the campaign and removed references to in-home disposal on the website and as part of their plan. They claimed to have successfully signed up additional law enforcement sites to participate in the semi-annual DEA take-back event, which was already scheduled for the October 22nd. They expressed that they would avoid refreshing or referencing county-funded take-back programs in light that they were aware that those programs are already overburdened and stretched for resources, and directing additional individuals to those sites may be counterproductive. They also indicated they negotiated kiosk locations within several cities, including Cabina, Pomona, Long Beach, and LA City. So in learning about their intent, we asked industry to share information to us, and the information that we requested from them about their activities is highlighted here. So let's go on to the next slide. Phase one of the industry plan actually began on October 10th, which was actually prior to the meeting that we had as part of the Health and Mental Health Services Cluster Meeting, and in a letter to the board of supervisors in the work group dated 10/19, industry provided a status update about their work, saying that the My Old Meds campaign had been launched, that they were supporting the already planned quarterly take-back events in the county. They reiterated the association's inability to carry out take-back events and continue to offer a $200,000 grant to the sheriff's department, and they commented on their benchmarks and outcome measurement plan. I would like to comment that some of the activities that they had highlighted in the cluster meeting, to the best of my knowledge, never have been accomplished. If they have, at least the website hasn't been updated, so I don't know of any other law enforcement activities. I don't know of kiosks in the cities that were referenced, and so on and so forth. So I would like to comment in the next slide a little bit about the My Old Meds campaign. As I said, this has been used in various other places in the country, but there are a number of shortcomings that I would like to highlight for the board to be aware of. First of all, I looked at the site yesterday, and you can quickly drill down and find a location where a link continues to promote in-home disposal of medications and Sharps. The campaign on the website does not offer any new take-back sites or collection options, which was a primary element in the motion that you approved in June. They continue to promote a reliance on the county-managed sites. The media outreach seems to be generalized around the county. It's really not targeting the unincorporated areas, and at least from the view of public health, the media messaging is not really addressing some of the core public health and environmental concerns that we have about the medications in LA County. Let's go to the next slide. A key issue is whether industry or its representatives are willing to go beyond its grant offer to the sheriff's department and host independent take-back events, which was the intent of the board's motion. In the materials provided to the county on October 19th, the trade associations reiterated their position, which I would like to quote, "For purposes of DEA rules regulating take-back, none of our associations is covered or able to register with DEA for purposes of carrying out take-back activities." Technically, this is true. The associations, per se, are not able to do that, but their next sentence in their materials they provided to us, I would say is incorrect. And this is what they say, quote, "Accordingly, the only compliant way for our entities to directly assist the county in physical take-back activities would be through grants and other in-kind contributions to county-led efforts." So this is where there's some disagreement. So regarding the claims of industry that they are unable to host take-back events, I'd like to highlight the information up here from the DEA on this matter, specifically the regulations allow a number of entities, including manufacturers and distributors of pharmaceuticals, to serve as collection points. In addition, these regs allow any person, including schools, environmental groups, and businesses, to partner with law enforcement to host a collection take-back event. So several options other than grants to county-led efforts do exist, including asking the manufacturers themselves, whom the industry represent, to host these events, and to develop partnerships that would include law enforcement and other entities to host these take-back events without requiring that law enforcement bear all the burden of organization and implementation. Next slide. You asked us to look into what Walgreens was doing. There was a letter we received on August 12th, which indicated during the months of May, June, and July, Walgreens had actually collected 750 pounds of take-back materials from locations within the county. There was a report just released in October that Walgreens has collected 10 tons from 500 pharmacies in 35 different states. While Walgreens has not yet established benchmarks, per se, which we think are very important, they did indicate they'll consider establishing those after the program has been running about a year. I'd also like to mention that they have made some important improvements. They've changed the signage on the bins to allow for liquids, and they've provided information in Spanish, which is absolutely critical. And from our point of view of the working group, they're committed to sharing information from LA County. Next slide. So I'd like to summarize some findings and share with you my point of view on our efforts. The key findings of our update to your board are summarized in this slide. In brief, I can say that the events since June have not produced the results that I think the board had hoped for. While industry has retained a public relations and public affairs firm and implemented an education outreach campaign, it's done so in a manner that really doesn't align with the elements that were outlined in your motion of June. Specifically, there's been no additional take-back events hosted by industry. Efforts to partner with public health to ensure an outreach and educational campaign that is appropriately messaged and coordinated were abandoned by industry, to include, for example, continuing to include linkages that messages that indicate that in-home disposal is an appropriate means, and also the measures of effectiveness of their efforts really have not been discussed or agreed upon by those of us in the county who'd like to work with them. So these results really highlight some of the challenges that are inherent in a voluntary approach that calls on an industry with multiple distinct entities to organize and implement strategies that are intended to address a critical public health problem. One more slide. Okay, so, you know, I do want to just provide a little bit of context on this. I don't know if you're aware, but this year, the Centers for Disease Control reported that the death rates in the United States actually turned up. It's been going down for a long time, but they actually turned up, and they reported that this summer, so it's going in the wrong direction. In the most recent report that my department released on the death rates in LA County, which is as of 2013, we observed something similar. The number of deaths and death rates actually went up 2%, which is rather extraordinary given that there's been a downward trend. In general, we often find that in certain groups, in certain situations, death rates may go up, but for the whole population to turn in the other direction is very concerning. Now, there has been, there are some efforts to try to investigate what the cause of this is. I did find one report this summer where those looking at the national data have indicated that the excess deaths may be attributable to what they call deaths of despair, which really includes three different things: their deaths from drug overdoses, their deaths from suicides, and their deaths from individuals who suffer from alcoholism. So right up there, you know, the drug overdose problem is a real problem in our nation. I will also mention that just yesterday, a report was released out of Yale. Many of you are aware of and think of the drug overdose problem that this presents as largely a problem of adults, but the study that was released out of Yale focused on children, and what it reported was that over a 15-year period, the rates of poisonings in children had increased by 165% from accidental, you know, overdoses of these drugs in their homes, and particularly alarming was that in children between the age of one and four, it actually went up over 200%. So the problem of pharmaceuticals collecting in the medicine cabinets of homes in LA County is continuing, resulting in a situation that continues to contribute to the problem of addictions, poisonings, and preventable deaths. From my point of view, each day of delay in implementing an effective program that achieves a scale that can make a difference in LA County is, in my view, serious concern and frankly unacceptable, and we need to find a way to help solve this. Also, from my view and in the view of the EPR working group, we believe there is an approach that is safe, convenient, and sustainable, and provides a variety of options that would not just be take-back events, but would be continuous convenient collection sites, as well as some mailbox-back options, and that approach would be an EPR-based regulatory solution, which could be approved by your board. So I thank you for your kind attention, and we'd be glad to take any questions that you may have.
Yes, I would like to thank you for your presentation, both Public Works as well as Public Health for working on this issue. You know, it's been a long time, and it's really disheartening to hear this report back today. And Dr. Gunsenhouser, if you had to rate this effort, what would you give this? An A or an F? Anything in between, but I mean...
And tell us if you're easy or hard grader.
Well, if I had to pick one, it would be an F. I hate to say it, I certainly can't give it an A. I do believe that industry has certain things beyond which they won't go. They're not willing to fund the take-back events. They're not willing to really work with us at the level of detail about their planning that we think is critical, but frankly, there's other things I just don't understand. They've said they would do some things, they haven't done those things. They've said they were going to take back the references to in-home disposal. I can't understand why that was done. So there are some things I understand that they disagree with, but there's other things that are just unexplainable to me, and so I would say that overall...
Well, it is perplexing, and some of the things that you detailed in your discussion, one that's disturbing to me is that they put out an outreach plan without our involvement, and somehow wanted to give the impression that we were going along with that when we were not. I'm not definitely, and very concerned also that we've lagged, we've wasted a lot of time. The statistics bear out that there are people dying. We have teenagers, we have kids going into our parents' and our grandparents' medicine cabinet and getting a hold of these drugs, medicines, that should be disposed of properly. And it's a shame that the county of Los Angeles can't do something about it. In fact, I just heard that last week, Cook County in Illinois, of all places, was able to pass and adopt an ordinance that targets the largest drug take-back program in the entire US, of all places. They get criticized for everything, but for this one, I give them an A. What's wrong with us? What's going on here? And I do want to say that it's time that we start to really hold some people accountable. I'm glad to hear Walgreens and others are doing what they can, and they should, and that should be expanded, and they should be held up high, saying, you know what, right thing, keep going, but we need more help, and we need the industry to also take back their medicines when it's necessary to dispose of them correctly. And, you know, I'm disappointed because we have a lot of folks out there that we work with, you know, there are very important applications for medicine and research and all that. I understand that, but the fact of the matter is, we have an obligation as a county to make sure that we provide a safety net for people so that we can appropriately dispose of hazardous medicine that can kill you and will kill you. So I'm not happy with this report, and I want to abstain from the report and file because I don't like it, and I want it to come back, but not in this manner. So that's my two cents. Sheila Kuehl, Supervisor Kuehl.
Thank you, Madam Chair. A few easy questions, I think, for this panel, but also, I have to say, I really do understand how the industry has not been able to comply with all of our requests because they're busy spending $109 million to defeat Prop 61. So of course, their attention is somewhere else. The industry seems to try to convince us sort of at the get-go that the main problem is a lack of awareness, and if everybody was aware, somehow all of this excess pharmaceutical product and Sharps would go to the right place. Do you really think, is it your opinion, yes or no, that the main problem is a lack of awareness?
I can answer that. Thank you, Supervisor Kuehl, appreciate your question. What we are relying upon is for people to make choices, which is the most difficult way to affect health. The first step is awareness, but it also includes knowledge, affects their attitudes, and actually leading to behavior. But in the end, if the choices available to them aren't convenient, you're not going to be able to influence their behavior. So it really is much more than awareness. Now, I would just mention that in the drug take-back event that occurred early in the year, there was 12,000 pounds taken back, but in the recent campaign in the midst of this educational program, it actually dropped to 8,000. It isn't to say that the educational campaign maybe didn't affect attitudes or awareness, but it didn't end up with an effect on behavior.
Thank you. Well, I am of the opinion that the industry does not wish to actually engage in a serious program that would accomplish what this board asked to be accomplished in LA County. When I was on the waste board, we had the same issue. The question is, who is to really be responsible for making certain that people have the choice, an easy choice, in terms of returning unused pharmaceuticals and Sharps, and the choice about how to send them, how to get them there, and then a real program for destroying them? It requires a lot of safety, it requires a lot of investment. On the waste board, we looked at the issue of the manufacturer's responsibility in a number of areas. We look at the issue for electronic waste, for instance, and although, of course, they always push the cost back onto the consumer, a few cents here and a few cents there when you buy, you know, your cellphone or your TV, goes to recycling efforts. I totally agree with you, awareness isn't enough. I was aware that it probably was a good idea to separate cans and bottles, et cetera, but when I only had one waste container from the city...
Exactly.
You know, and they didn't tell us, what do you do with these, years ago? There has to be a concerted effort, and I think what the industry has done to itself in this county is to make certain that there will be a very strong ordinance about recycling and about return of these pharmaceutical products and Sharps. The danger in our waters, the danger even in terms of the water supply from various different kinds of areas, people don't even, you know, think about it, the danger to health, as the chair pointed out, and also, you know, there's a lot of turnover of real estate in this county. How is that related? Well, a lot of looky-loos are going from house to house, and we've gotten a very high number of reports that people are missing pharmaceuticals after people come in to see their houses. And now, we have to educate people, take the, you know, the stuff out of your medicine cabinet if you're going to have an open house, because it's another way that things are getting stolen, and people say, I've got a lot, I don't even know what I've got in my medicine cabinet anymore. I don't remember, I didn't use up that, and I didn't use up that. What do I do? So I think it's our responsibility, and we will take it, because the industry, I think, in terms of the actions not taken, or weakly taken, W-E-A-K-O-Y, as presented in your report, show us a real lack of commitment, and I will never be convinced by anything that's said to us that there is this idea that they are committed. This notion of in-home disposal, it's very difficult, really, and again, I rely on my experience in the waste board. No matter what you wrap these pills in, if you put them in the trash, and it goes into a landfill, eventually, it's going to affect the landfill around it. And we're talking about tons of stuff. We're not talking about a few pounds here and there. There are so many pharmaceuticals out in the world, and so many prescriptions. I mean, that's the answer now in healthcare, isn't it? Take a pill. And if you don't take all your pills, do what with them? So I'm disappointed in the industry, very pleased with the report. I think that to show my displeasure with the industry would not mean that I would not receive and file the report for me, because I think the report is accurate and good. So I would want to continue working, as we have, on a very strong ordinance, the strongest ordinance we can adopt in Los Angeles, because I know that it will work, and manufacturer responsibility is going to be a part of it. So thank you very much for the report and for the research.
Supervisor Antonovich and Canadi.
Were you able to evaluate the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department pharmaceutical disposable units?
I don't know if the sheriff says a representative that would want to answer that question, but I know that the sheriff's has been an active participant in our EPR working group, and they continue to manage a program with 21 kiosks throughout the county to take back drugs.
Because I was not aware of that until I was at the sheriff's station in Montrose and noticed that they have the, it's like a mailbox in front of the station where they take the pharmaceutical drugs. And when this information was coming before us, I was not aware that we already have a program that's operating, and I would like to ask the sheriff's department... You can just jump over that. I want to ask you, how long have you had that program? How many units do you have in the county?
Yes, sir, Jim Wallach, Captain at the Narcotics Bureau. We've had the program since 2009. In 2011, we started taking Sharps in addition to the expired medication, and we have the kiosk at 21 of our 23... And we have the kiosk at 21 of our 23 stations. We actually have three kiosks, kiosks or mailboxes at each station. One takes the unused or expired medication, one takes the Sharps, and then the third one takes just regular narcotics if somebody wants to throw some in there. The third one's not used very often.
Repeat that again, please.
The first kiosk, we have three at each station. The one takes expired or unused medication. The second one collects the Sharps, which is the needles. And the third one collects just regular narcotics if somebody is willing to throw their narcotics away. They put it in that mailbox, not used very often.
And what has been your experience?
Well, our experience has, we have many challenges. First of all, it's about, we collect around 20,000 pounds of medication each year. What happens is, they become full because the clinics nearby take advantage of it, and they fill them up very quickly. Our narcotics units are responsible for collecting them and taking them down to central property. At central property, we don't have much room because of all the other evidence we have there. We've had issues where people start throwing lots of things that aren't supposed to be in there. We've had IV bags, we have colostomy bags, we have diapers, we had an unexploded ordinance someone put in there one time. Because individuals come down and throw the Sharps in the wrong kiosk, we've had some of our detectives poked with the needles. We've had about eight occasions of that since we started the program. So we do have challenges.
And have you shared that information for this report?
Yes, sir, we have.
So how would you improve the operation that the sheriff has in his pharmaceutical disposable program?
How would we, how would we improve it? Well, the sheriff has come out against the ordinance, or excuse me, excuse me. He has come out in support of the ordinance, and because we are trying to get out of the business of collecting these because of all the challenges that we have, and it really becomes an officer safety, or excuse me, a risk management problem. Because once the mailboxes are filled up, people just come by and they drop them off in front of the mailboxes. These mailboxes are set up right along the sidewalk outside our stations.
Right. Well, when I saw that, I hadn't seen that process that we had already been involved with when we first were discussing this issue. And it was quite a revelation, because I don't know how many people know that these are available right now. And do you incinerate those, or how do you dispose of the narcotics?
Yes, we take, we take the, after we collect them and bring them down to central property, on a quarterly basis, we take them down to the incinerators in Long Beach and dispose of them.
Let me ask, I guess, Public Health, home disposable methods were removed from the industry's website, is that correct?
Well, I looked, sir, I checked yesterday, and within two clicks of My Old Meds L.A., I got to a recommendation that said in-home disposal was okay. And gave instructions on how to do that.
Okay. Now, the county's working group and the industry's group communicated for six months with only a public education outreach campaign that was conducted with the ADEA take-back event. And while the original intent of the motion was to conduct activity with industry taking the lead, only some of this has happened, with still more left to improve upon. What is the likelihood that this is happening? And are there future take-back events? Will industry and the county be able to put a plan that truly illustrates extended producer responsibility?
Thank you, Supervisor, for your question. My assessment of the situation is this: in documents and on multiple occasions, industry has reiterated that they see only one way to fund take-back events in the county, and those is to provide dollars to the activities that the sheriff's department is already doing. The sheriff's department has a position that does not work for them. So we're at an impasse of finding any ways that industry can fund the take-back events that we've sought the last six months.
Which pharmacies have agreed to participate in take-back operations if there is an ordinance that mandates this program? And have they done that in writing?
I'll try to answer that question. We have had independent pharmacies as well as associations that represent pharmacies that have expressed both interest and support in the ordinance. We have not gotten commitments from individual pharmacies at this point, but we have been in communication with Walgreens, and their intent at this time is to continue to operate the seven locations that they currently have kiosks within the L.A. County.
So what's the percentage of pharmacies that we know who would participate?
It's difficult to know that for sure. We do know that there are over 1,800 pharmacies operating in L.A. County, and our estimate, when we're developing the ordinance to provide a convenient opportunity for the majority of residents in L.A. County to have a location, would only require between 250 and 300 of those pharmacies to participate. Based on the ordinances that have been approved and implemented in other counties, there are six so far that was mentioned in the presentation. We are confident that we'd be able to achieve that convenience standard that was outlined in the ordinance.
Now, I understand that CVS now owns all of the target pharmacies, which is about a third of all pharmacies in our state, but we don't have assurances that they'd be participating in the event if we mandated a take-back program. So what have we done to ensure that they would be participating in this effort?
I think what we've done is continued to work closely with all of the stakeholders, both the retail pharmacies, hospitals, and other entities that can serve as collection points. And I think we've gotten positive feedback from those stakeholders to date. But we won't know for sure what our experience in L.A. County will be unless we do move forward with the ordinance. All we can do is look at where similar programs have been implemented, both in California and in other jurisdictions, to try to learn from their results.
Well, what's frustrating is, those of us at the local level have a better grasp in handling issues, but then the state gets involved and ties the hands of local government. And I say that because last week, the State Board of Pharmacy approved regulations that carve out a general opt-out option for pharmacies, for pharmacists in charge of pharmacies, which has the potential to undermine an ordinance, since pharmacies are only one of the places our residents would want to take their medications back to. So how have we factored this into our analysis, and what sort of negative impact would the state of California's now regulation by their State Board of Pharmacy have on our ability to develop a sensible, reasonable program that protects public health?
I think that's an excellent question, and it goes back to the discussion that the sheriff was mentioning. We know that their kiosks are being overwhelmed, even though they're not enough to really service the county as a whole, and they're not as convenient, and we see residents vastly preferring to go to their local pharmacy to provide drop-off. There's really only two mechanisms to move forward with this. One would be to make it voluntary for pharmacies, the other is a mandate on pharmacies. The EPR working group had discussed this extensively, and our recommendation would be that we continue to have a voluntary approach for the pharmacies. Our feeling is that if there was a mandate on the manufacturers to develop sufficient collection locations through an ordinance, that as they've been able to do in other jurisdictions, with so many potential partnerships available to them, over 1,800, and they'd only need about 10% or 15% of those to have a successful program in L.A. County, we're very confident that they'd be able to do that if they were to create the same kind of partnerships that they've formed in other jurisdictions.
What does the Pharmacy Association believe is the best way to ensure that the pharmacies participate? And would industry be able to work with the pharmacies to work out an agreement that recognizes the take-back options could still be achieved without a mandate? For example, funding mail-back envelopes...
Yes.
...that they could give to their customers? Or be available for, go to the pharmacy and get an envelope to mail back the...
Yes. Supervisor Angelo Belomo with Public Health. We think the best method is to not mandate it on pharmacies. The pharmacies and the retailers, over the last year and a half of discussions with us, has made it clear that many within the pharmaceutical, I'm sorry, many within the pharmacies themselves and retailers would like to provide a convenient mechanism for the same customers that come in and purchase pharmaceuticals to return their old meds to those facilities. And they maintain that if we did not mandate their participation, because many of them are precluded from doing that. They have stores, for example, some retail locations that has a pharmacy that closes after hours, and those pharmacies would have a hard time agreeing to serve as a collection point because there wouldn't be somebody there when the customers came in to drop it off. So they need to be able to opt out. But many other pharmacies, from the discussions we've had from their associations, would be happy to participate in this program. We don't see the state decision that you made reference to as an impediment to that because we don't believe they should be mandated. Now, just another thing, yesterday I got a call from the Pharmacy Association in California, one of the retailers, the retailer associations, and they had asked us, they had heard that we were mandating now pharmacies to participate. We said, no, from the very beginning, we have not agreed to that. But they've been told that we were now mandating their participation. They were very relieved to hear that we weren't, and they're anxious to participate in this program. But it's only when the industry is going to be motivated to work with the pharmacies, to make them part of the solution. And I think ultimately, that's the program that this county's going to want.
But is the industry creating the regulation from the State Board of Pharmacy that limits our ability to curb the pharmaceutical products that need to be disposed of legally?
I don't believe so.
Yeah, our departments have been closely following and commenting on those regulations, and we've submitted comments that have been incorporated into the regulations, the final version that was adopted, that did provide some relief on some of the requirements that would have made it more onerous. In our opinion, most of the regulations reinforce what was already required with the federal DEA regulations. And I agree with Angelo Belomo's position that it should not create a barrier. The other positive thing with several counties moving forward with ordinances ahead of us, they've already created the frameworks that would be needed, the contractual relationships and legal agreements that would be necessary to develop this kind of a program. And so we're, once again, confident, I know I've used that phrase several times, but we feel confident that if the board were to move forward with an ordinance, that it could be very successful.
And then, the sheriff's department, you've turned down the $200,000 grant, I understand, that the pharmacies have provided or would provide for operating in the ten on incorporate areas. Is there any mitigations that could take place where you would accept that grant to develop the program or expand your program?
Yes, Supervisor. My name's Earl Shields, Chief of Detectives. Yeah, the sheriff met with the industry representatives, and he made it clear, one, that he supports the proposed ordinance, but he also said that he's very willing to participate in the education component. He's interested in that. He's willing to maintain all the kiosks that we have, although he would like to see some other entity, contractual or county, assume responsibility for the content of them, simply because he feels that this is a diversion of law enforcement resources into something that's really more of a public health issue, and that the collection, transportation, storage, and disposal of biological matter and pharmaceuticals is not really a law enforcement function. But he's willing to keep the kiosks there.
You can have the kiosks there, but have public health or whatever.
Right. As I understand, I believe there's a contract company now takes care of the Sharps portion. Is that correct? Yeah. But, and he's also, as the law showed, that he's willing to partner on these take-backs, but partner in a law enforcement security-type role, not as a host to be the sole person responsible for these events. He made it very clear to the industry representatives that it was his feeling that this money that they were offering was money in an attempt to basically alleviate them of the responsibility of this program, you know, basically buying themselves out of it. And he says, in an industry that makes billions of dollars a year, he doesn't see that this is the way to go. He believes the ordinance is the way to go.
And the industry, they have serious problems with having envelopes available at their pharmacies that you could use to mail back unused pharmaceuticals that you purchased?
We haven't heard that, Supervisor, but remember that the type of ordinance that this board considered earlier this year was an ordinance that provided the industry with just a performance requirement that they have to provide for safe, convenient, and sustainable take-back. And that we saw the sheriff's stations as one method, we saw take-back events that could occur numerous times during the year to be another method, and we saw pharmacies where people could bring their meds at the same time they're purchasing meds to also be yet another method. And what we're really hoping is that ultimately, if we do have an ordinance in L.A. County, that the industry, knowing that they're going to come up with something, will develop something that really works and takes advantage of the full range of opportunities so that we really do get safe and convenient disposal options.
What is your timeframe for that?
The original proposal would have been a bit over a year between when the board took action and when the plans would begin being implemented, but we did add a proposal to accelerate some initial take-back events. And I wanted to mention, too, that the discussions we're having, the concept really reinforces the board's policy of producer responsibility. We don't want to micromanage the way industry would be carrying this out. We want to give them flexibility. In the jurisdictions that have mandated all pharmacies participate, we've seen more of the mail-back programs because the pharmacies prefer just providing the envelopes rather than hosting a kiosk if they're forced to do it. If there's more flexibility, then the pharmacies can negotiate directly with the manufacturers, and they figure out the system that is both most convenient and provides the service to our residents, but it does it in a cost-effective way. And we think that it's a better approach than having just the sheriffs provide the program.
And you said Walgreens already has a program?
Yes. Walgreens has implemented kiosks on a voluntary basis in 35 states. There's over 500 locations, seven of which are located in Los Angeles County.
You would think that would be an incentive for people to go to Walgreens...
Exactly.
...because they have that ability.
Right.
Definitely.
It's a good marketing tool for them, convenience, et cetera, clean, et cetera, et cetera.
Right.
Absolutely.
Are they operated behind the pharmacist, or behind the counter, or are they next to the counter? Or where do they put those?
They tend to be in the public areas where residents can come, but they're in the view of the pharmacist, so the pharmacist can keep an eye on it.
Right, right. Anybody can just drop their drugs in there. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Supervisor Canabi?
No, I just, I'm supporting receiving and filing, but I have a problem with the report. And, you know, my feeling is, I'm almost at the point, just go back to the original ordinance that we talked about and force everybody to the table, because obviously, that's not happening. That conversation is not being held the way it should be. And everybody needs to get back to the table, and the sooner the better. And so at some point, we need to force that issue. Otherwise, we're not, we're going to be sitting there getting these kinds of reports every time, and somebody's going to, you know, call our office or somebody, you know, we're going to get all the stories and the why and the why not. But they need to be serious, because it's a huge issue for all of us. I mean, not just us as elected officials, but the constituents we represent. And so we need action.
Supervisor Ridley Thomas?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Let me make sure that I understand the points being made by the representatives of public health. And to ask if I'm hearing a discordant note being struck, am I hearing divergent points of view articulated by...
I'm sorry, Supervisor, we didn't hear that.
Am I hearing divergent points of view being articulated by the two of you as to the current state of play and what should happen prospectively?
I don't believe so.
All right.
Sir?
It seems to me that, on the one hand, the chief health officer was saying that... It seems to me that, on the one hand, the chief health officer is saying that what we have, by way of response and our quote-unquote compliance on the part of the industry, is less than adequate and does not live up to what you might have expected. And the chief environmental officer seemed to be saying that mandatory compliance may or may not be workable, therefore, we need to get to a place that is sensible, reasonable, and implementable. I don't know if I misunderstood or if I am placing words in someone's mouth here.
Supervisor, I may have, I may have missed some of what you had said. The microphone, I didn't hear it, but I think what you were commenting on is that you heard that compliance or mandatory compliance may be an issue.
Right.
And those remarks from us, from the working group, were mandatory compliance or mandatory requirements on the pharmacies we recommend against. And we have, ever since we started hearing from the working group and the industry group, which includes retailers and pharmaceutical, I'm sorry, pharmacy associations, they've told us, many of us will want to provide this service to our customers, just as Walgreens has, because it will help our business. But if you mandated upon all pharmacies, it'll be problematic, because some are not equipped to serve as a collection point, for the reasons I mentioned earlier. But in terms of the mandatory program, the ordinance was mandatory on the pharmaceutical industry and the sharps industry, but it laid out what the criteria were. It's got to be safe, and we defined what that meant. It's got to be convenient, and we defined what that meant.
clear sense of it being workable. I don't quite know what we get, so I think we really need to dig into this and see what we can do that satisfies the overall objectives, once those objectives have been more clearly spelled out. I think the department is obliged to help the board in that. Part of the question that needs to be asked, I believe, is, we've worked reasonably hard over the last year to figure some of this out. What are the things that you've learned, and what mid-cost corrections might there be that would be useful and consistent with the board's expectations? I just simply believe there's a lot more work to be done to scrub this and get this in a more intelligible policy format. Madam Chair.
I would just like to say that, again, I want to thank our Public Health Department for your work and public works. No way is my vote meant to degrade in any way or denigrate your report. I'm frustrated, so I'm also applying the F. The A through F, right, grading system? So, for those that don't want to cooperate, because it takes two. Takes two to work together. You all are doing your part, so, thank you very much. So we do have several speakers. I want to thank the sheriffs for being here, and I understand the issues that you're raising, because it also will impact employees' safety, and that's an OSHA issue. Thank you.
Okay, very good. We have several individuals that requested to speak on this item. Agenda item 28, we have Siza Elida, who is giving up her time, her minute, to give to Eileen Prince, who will now be given two minutes to speak.
Madam Chair, Supervisors, thank you so much for having us today. My name is Siza Elida, and I am with the Pharmaceutical Research and Manufacturers of America. And given the presentation that you just, we all just heard, I'd like to not yield my time to Eileen and just kind of respond to a couple of the issues that were brought up during that presentation.
So she's taking it back? I just want to correct, because this is one minute, so you're speaking for one minute. My understanding is that you were going to give your time to Eileen Prince?
She was.
So that's two minutes, so you get one minute apiece now, okay? Not two. Go ahead.
Okay.
Start the clock.
Great, thank you. So, first of all, for clarification, in Cook County, it is a voluntary program, and that we are working hand-in-hand with the Sheriff's Department to do the education and outreach program. We did, we said that we would work on measurements to do a benchmark, and then come back in six months to a year to see how much that education program has worked for that. Also, regarding the take-back initiatives, one of the things that is, you know, important with the DEA is that you have to have a brick-and-mortar facility to take back, and as associations, we do not have that. That would be the manufacturers that would have to do that. And if you look at the other counties, the counties are working with each individual manufacturer on their take-back. Thank you.
Thank you. Next witness, please.
Hi, my name is Eileen Prince. I'm with Fraser Communications. I'm here to just talk about the education and outreach campaign that we started on October 10th with radio, and it's still just rolling out. So I did want to speak to the fact that there was not a full-fledged campaign in place before the National Take-Back Day. We just got it started, and we started it with information. We did that because we did a pre-campaign research survey that clearly showed that 41 percent of L.A. County does not, residents do not know the importance of proper medication disposal, so we have to start somewhere. And while I understand that awareness may be the first step, you do have to start somewhere, and that is where we're starting. It definitely won't create behavior change. That is something my agency does a lot of, and it takes many years of messaging before you actually see behavior change. So awareness is key. We also found in our research that five, one of five residents do not know what to do with their old expired medications.
Thank you. Okay, I'd like to call up Stephen Johnson, Vishnu Sabramaniam, and Carlos Gutierrez, and Heidi Sanborn. Go ahead, state your name, sir.
My name is Stephen Johnson. Greetings, Sheriff Solis and members of the board. My name is Stephen Johnson, as I said. I'm here representing Hill the Bay as their Water Resources Policy Analyst. The pharmaceutical companies were generously given a chance to demonstrate their commitment to the health and well-being of the people of Los Angeles County by providing increased awareness and convenience for the proper disposal of syringes and unused prescription medication. Upon inspection of the County Department of Public Health's evaluation, it appears that the pharmaceutical companies failed in this endeavor. Going back to the original ordinance that was considered by the board on June 14th, Hill the Bay reiterates that ordinance was created through a thorough and inclusive process involving diverse stakeholders and as ready as written. By instating the original ordinance, Hill the Bay sees only benefits for the people of our county and encourages all supervisors to assist their constituents by giving them a safe and convenient way to dispose of unsafe pharmaceuticals and syringes. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon. Vishnu Sabramaniam with the California Alliance for Retired Americans. We represent 950,000 seniors all over the state and here in Los Angeles County. I'm here today to ask you to move forward with a mandatory drug take-back program with producer responsibility. I wanted to thank Supervisor Solis and QL first. I'm so thankful for your leadership on this issue. You're willing to speak up and show courage on this issue in the face of an industry that can intimidate all of us on this issue and hold the public hostage. So thank you for your leadership. Thank you for speaking up for people who have lost their lives due to drug overdose, children who are harmed, and seniors who don't know what to do with their unused drugs. Seniors cannot wait anymore. The longer we wait on a mandatory ordinance, more medicine will remain in people's cabinets, more people will die from improperly accessing medication, more damage will be done to our water, the environment, landfills. You gave the industry a chance, and they have not done anything. We urge you to make up lost time, accelerate timelines, and implement a mandatory producer-based drug take-back program as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Carlos Gutierrez. I'm with the Consumer Healthcare Products Association. We're the over-the-counter medicine manufacturers and part of the coalition that has been tasked with the June 14th motion of getting the education program off the ground. First and foremost, we take this very seriously. We took the motion very seriously, and we knew that we had a very short time period to get this off the ground, roughly four months from the time that we initially interacted with the county, and to this day here, where we knew we were going to be judged on what we've done. Therefore, that's why we wanted to move forward, and unfortunately, our interactions with health department staff were a bit more adversarial, if you will. There wasn't a lot of collaboration. They were wanting to really nitpick the campaign, and if we had a year, that might be different, but the reality of having four months to launch it, we really wanted to get off the ground. And I know there's a long way for us to go. We're committed to that through the next year.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Heidi Sanborn with the National Stewardship Action Council. This board meeting actually started with a prayer by a Native American, and he prayed for the earth, which is sacred, and to preserve our water and our children for the next seven generations. And this item actually gave you the opportunity today to do that, and I'm very sorry it's being squandered, because children, the earth, and our water deserve it. As your own county survey told us, 69 percent of people in this county are still trashing or flushing their medicines, and 38 percent of needle users are trashing or flushing their needles. This ordinance had been delayed five, six times now, and the industry's been given ample time. They do these programs already in Mexico, Portugal, Colombia, most of Europe, most of Canada, and they're getting stronger, and they know how to do this, they know how to fund it, they just don't want to do it here. It's an embarrassment, they should be ashamed, and I really hope the day will come when this county will take action to protect the people of the county. Thank you.
We have Alex Davis, Rachel Horning, and Wayne Swindler.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Chairmanwoman, and members of the board. My name is Alex Davis. I'm with the Valley Industry and Commerce Association, VICA, and we represent over 400 value businesses and those across Los Angeles. And we appreciate your leadership on this item and look forward to commenting on its continued implementation, and ask that the county continue to analyze all proposals, assess any unintended consequences, and select the most balanced plan that promotes the physical and economic well-being of the county. Thank you.
Next.
Good afternoon. I'm Rachel Horning. I'm here on behalf of BizFed, the Los Angeles County Business Federation, a grassroots alliance of 160 top business groups representing 325,000 employers with 3 million employees throughout L.A. County. And I'll be short. Recognizing our shared goal to deliver a program that will actually maximize the safe disposal of unused medicines and sharps, we believe it is imperative to provide the industry with a responsible amount of time to show results from the public education program as opposed to quickly switching back to the mandatory ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, definitely a grade of F. It's really taken too long, but thank you to Walgreens for doing it. Simply make it all of these pharmacies a condition of their operating permits, make them have the collection facility. And as far as the other, the Sheriff's Department, you could, and the Fire Department could each have these kiosks, that is a good idea, because they're open 24/7, people would use them more, but don't have sheriff's deputies and personnel touching this type of waste, because every time that's going to happen, somebody gets stuck by a needle or something, that is a labor code violation. In fact, that would constitute punitive damages against the county and liability. So they shouldn't even be doing that. I mean, not even going near that stuff without toxic review and protection. I was really surprised to hear about that. But again, he's going to be missed. Good job by Mike Antonovich bringing up that issue on the Sheriff's Department. Thank you.
Okay, members, this item is a receive and file, and I want to be recorded as a no. That's moved by Antonovich, seconded by Kenabi. Without objection. My abstention, my vote. Okay, next.